Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selecting meeting for May 3, 2023. Call the meeting to order. Let's start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
All right.
Okay. Bills have been signed. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second to that.
All in favor? Okay.
What was last week's date? I just did them. All right. So I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of April 26.
Second to that.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer, your weekly update.
Just a couple items. First one is to publicly announce the school elections last night. We had 139 voters turn out. Budget did pass. Notification from the Code Office that there is no planning board meeting this week. They have no business. And that the water softener filtration system has been installed. They've taken the first of two water tests. It's still showing a little bit of sodium in it above regulation. They said that's often normal. They're going to run another one about a week, and then they'll go from there.
I, reviewing that test report, I thought it indicate there was no official level for sodium. Did I misread that?
There's no, for the chloride, but the sodium was starred. I mean, it indicated that it was above EPA standard.
I thought it indicated there were no standards for that. Maybe I misread it.
Start and pulled out.
I, I don't know. I-
There's one posted in the back. If you want me to grab it.
Okay. Well, if it doesn't meet the standard, that's seems to be something that needs to be taken care of.
It came down from six, seven, eight hundred, what it was.
Yeah, down to like one-
One, two hundred. I mean, it was definitely a big difference. He said that it might not have run through long enough.
I must have, I must have misread that because I thought there-
No, you might not have, but-
I, I don't think there was a standard that was stated for sodium. And so at this point, my assumption was it's more of a-
Cosmetic.
A taste matter. Is it, does it have a salt taste to it or not? If it was otherwise meeting, or there was no standard, then I guess, then it would just come down to being a taste issue. Can we confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If, if not, if it's not meeting the standard, then I think we need to work with the vendor to get it to that point.
They are intending on doing that. Like I said, they always do two tests, so.
That's great. Thank you.
The last thing that I wanted to discuss with you guys, you saw the email that I forwarded you from the Chair of the Warrant and Finance, indicating that he'd like us to bring all of the department heads to the meeting on Monday, May 8, should there be possible questions on the budget.
I'm, I'm not sure, David. Okay.
Well, I emailed, yeah, I emailed it last week when he sent it.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. I, I've had a chance to look at the email, and also I've gone back to the calendar, Dennis. And you don't have to speak to this. It's just, let me get my bearings here. The, the Warrant and Finance Committee, I think the first they were going to take up the, the actual warrant was on the 24th of May, of, of April, and it's now May 3. So we're- Huh?
May 8. Next Monday is going to be the first time they see it.
Next Monday, so we'll be like 10 days behind, or whatever it is. You've already met with all the department heads, right? And so you've had a chance to go through their recommendations.
Yeah.
And I guess rather than asking all the department heads to show up your meeting, you'll, you'll have a couple of more, you have two or three more meetings here as I see it.
We have two.
Two more. So if, if you have specific questions that you have for individual departments, I think it would be good to get those documented now, and we could get them in advance to the department heads that you have questions on, and we can make sure those are addressed, rather than asking everyone to come in.
Well, they, they ought to go over the warrant when we give it to them. At least go over the warrant, come up with the questions, instead of having everybody kind of in a room, and they might get a question, they might not.
Well, it was just, I was just trying to expediate things to make sure we got it done in a timely manner. And obviously, we're going to go through the warrant for Monday night, and the warrant, some of it has changed from what the departments have asked for.
Yeah.
And-
Well, I guess what I would ask is if you could go through the warrant, and if you have questions, just identify what those are, and we'll make sure that those department heads are there to answer your question at the following meeting. Does that work for you?
It works for me. I like to do whatever the town wants me to do.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you'll get that. Yeah, that's what he was going to do. Okay?
I'll do whatever the town, and then if the committee can come to a solution or agreement, or whatever word you want to use on the 15th, to vote on the articles, then that would be my intent.
Okay. All right.
But I don't know. That's up to the committee.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Anything else there?
Yeah, a couple of emails I want to point your attention to. One of them is from O'Donnell's that I forwarded you guys. They thanking you for the meeting that you had, but they're looking to put an estimated tax value on the notices that they're going to send out. In order to do that, they're looking for your school county tax revenue sharing, other revenues, anticipated revenues, in order to come up with that number, just as if you were committing taxes now. And all of the, the warrant as approved, you need to figure out what that total budget is going to be versus how much is going to come from unassigned, so that they can take the new valuation numbers and figure out what the tax rate is going to be. They also-
When does that, when would they like that, or to send that out?
So I sent it to you either yesterday or today. You would have just gotten it. They just sent it to me.
No, no.
Oh, the notices go out by the middle to the end of May.
End of May. So that means we would have had to have gone through the revenue budget at that point, and determine what we need from tax revenue in order to balance the budget?
Right. Since essentially your warrant is done, you should know at this point.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't know what a county tax is.
We take last year's and put it three to five times.
We could estimate it.
They're also looking for the specific notice of the 2023 property tax stabilization. It now looks like it may be going forward. It says that this means that the data entry of the stabilization amounts need to be in Trio, and would like to know if those have been completed. And they're hoping to have this information by, you know, within the next two weeks, so that they can start meeting with property owners here.
Has, has the state made some progress in, in making a commitment on that?
I'm going to say based on this email, it's going to be in place, or O'Donnell's wouldn't be asking us if we've entered on, if we've done the legwork behind it. But this is the first update that we've gotten on it.
Because the last I saw, it looked like it was in question.
Correct.
Because the state didn't have the money to fund it.
That's right.
Do we have to make a motion on the amount we're evaluating that, meaning the 97 or 94?
No, that's governed, yeah. Oh, as far as whether you're going to evaluate it 100% or 100, yeah. Not yet. He's going to run three different scenarios, but he can't do it without your budget and your revenue. Now that the school budget's passed, he has those numbers, but it's up to you to give him the, all of the ones that he's missing.
Okay. So, did you say the end of May?
Within seven to 10 days. End of May is when the letters are supposed to go on the property.
So, so within a week, we have to have completed this estimate of revenue?
Yes.
Okay. Because we have not worked on the revenue budget yet. Well, I suggest we put it on agenda for our next meeting. And ask the Treasurer to come in and provide some estimates on revenues that, that we can work out with her. And so then we can share that with-
Should we do a workshop?
Well, I was, what I was thinking was, I was just going to-
Is it normally done in a workshop, David?
Can we do it in a workshop instead? That way there it's-
Yeah, so why don't we start next Wednesday, Tom? It's a Wednesday, Tom Wednesday, we call it in the office. It's a Tom Wednesday.
Okay.
So we'll have draft revenues compared to last year's and this year's. We'll run it through with him and get some ideas and make some recommendations to you.
Do it Wednesday night?
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, not to take away from the board's role, but there's only so much you can do. If, you know, if we look at the last three years of excise tax, I mean, you know, you're going to take that average. I mean, a lot of these numbers are not, there's not going to be a lot of work behind it. It's just picking the average and figuring out where you think it's going to fall.
So this communication that goes out to residents or tax, property owners will have their, it will be their first view about what the appraised value is?
That's correct.
It will indicate what the tax rate is estimated to be-
Correct.
For next year, and an estimated tax bill.
Correct. With and without the stabilization.
With and without stabilization, depending on what the state does.
Correct.
And then there's an offer to call or come in, right?
It may not be that, all that challenging. I think we can probably get to this.
That's all I have.
All right, so I'll, I'll take a look at it Wednesday, and we'll talk about it Wednesday night.
Yep, perfect.
Fair enough? Okay. Anything else, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Department head committee chair updates.
How are you doing?
Doing well, and yourself?
You know, that the brush pile has been stacked up, and hopefully it'll get us through to end of August, I mean, 1st of August. And also the cement pad in front of the sand has been removed.
Yep.
And there's no cement under that building, just for your question.
Was just that entry point?
It was just that entry point. And the only thing I can think of is when Toronto drops a can or something, they put it on the cement. I don't know. But there's no cement. I dug, well, I dug down three inches, and I didn't hit any cement, and I hit gravel. So I don't know outside of that.
It doesn't get particularly muddy in there or anything, does it?
No, no.
Okay. I didn't know if that maybe was the reason.
But I just wanted to let you know that cement has been removed, and the stockpile has, I mean, the brush pile has been stacked up, so.
Very good. Thank you.
So you're, on your warrant, I think it was a, did we fix the issue with the dumpsters?
Yes, it's added in tonight's review.
It has been, okay.
Containers.
Other question I got is, you met with the engineer up there on both the parking lot and the entrance and stuff. Was there any mention of DEP or anything, or?
Did you see the email I put in your box?
Yeah, I, just now, yes.
We're just trying to figure out how DEP-
Where that came from.
I have no idea.
Can, can you elaborate what happened with DEP? Because the proposal from, from SABAGO talked about all those approvals necessary to get through. What else is-
Well, I mean, we're at the very beginning, very beginning steps. The only thing that's happened is we've had the engineer up there to talk to two people, essentially. I think David was just surprised. We got an email from DEP, which I forwarded to the full board-
Yeah, I just read it, yeah.
That says, "We understand there's a project, a major project going on at DEP. We need to be involved. We'd like to see plans A, B, and C." And the thought was just kind of, that was quick, and we're, we haven't decided.
We're not doing a big-
We haven't done, haven't even started.
Came from DEP.
Right.
DEP contacted us, so-
Yeah, I, there was no mention about-
I didn't know if anybody had mentioned something to you about it.
Nope.
Because obviously, when we do the engineer, the engineer is going to go through and do the same thing we did with West Shore Drive, so.
No, nobody mentioned-
Somebody must be more concerned than I am.
And Tom, the other piece, Robin called me this week, and I think that, I think it might have been, David was here, I think, when we were having the conversation, but he just asked if we forgot about the containers. Remember the two $5,000 containers?
Yes.
He didn't see them on the warrant last week.
Well, I didn't hear it.
Right, he didn't hear it, so he had, they were on there, and that's-
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear, for, cleared up.
Very good.
Thank you. All right.
Evening. Cemetery Committee, Jim Driscoll and Ken Allen, Tracy Lavassa is over there, and Jay Carter, members of our board. We're just here to give an update on the cemeteries that we're working on. The one down on St. Paige Road, before we had the trees removed, how many stones did you have to dig up out of the ground? You figure, half dozen?
We have, yeah, we have 10, and we found a couple of stones when we were probing.
Yeah, three, four inches. Just buried under leaves and over the years, you know. So we pulled all those stones out before the tree company came in and dug up the ones that were buried. Just over the years, nothing's been done in there. And put them off to the side and taped them off with caution tape and everything, so they wouldn't get damaged by the trees falling down. The gentleman who did it lowered every branch down with ropes and chains, and we dragged them out of there, bringing the stumps down as low as we could. One of them's a little higher than we wanted, but we're going to take care of that. Jay went out and bought a stump grinder, so we're not going to have to hire a company, which is huge. And it's a smaller one, so that we can go in on the grave. It's probably like the weight of a commercial lawnmower.
Is that the one that goes on the back of your tractor?
No, it's a portable, like 16 doors.
Nice.
Oh, boy.
We didn't want to bring the weight, weight in over the, over the graves underneath, you know. So the same scenario down on Goose Pond Road, and these folks here, I can tell you, I've been involved in a lot of things in this town, and I've never met people like these folks here that are in it for the right reasons. Everything they do is, it's good stuff, and they believe in what they're doing, too. I had a interesting conversation, it really wasn't a conversation. Someone confronted me on the way out of the polls, and it's really strange, because it's someone who over the years has called me multiple times, got dozens of messages from him. But he, you know, he said, "What's going on with the cemetery down there? Those people have desecrated the cemetery." The only thing that has desecrated the cemeteries is years of apathy and non-action by the people in this town, myself included. When you've got to dig stones out that are four and five inches deep, there's a problem, you know. But we're doing everything the best we can, and we're protecting the, not only all the stones, but the graves. We're careful what we bring in and out of there. And nobody on our end has desecrated anything. It was an insult. And I didn't appreciate where this person did it, coming out of the polls, very unprofessional, and then walking away, you know. And of course, I'm not going to fire back in a, in a situation like that, you know. But it's odd that I didn't get a phone call or messages or something prior to that. It was just, but there's no, there is no desecration going on down there by this group of people. This town's never, and the cemetery's never had a group of people like this before. But Kenny would like to say a few things, and that, it's an insult to all of us to hear something like that because of the time for free that these people are putting in, years. And the only time they call in the trees, it's because of, it's, it's too big. We're not, we're not commercial. We can't do that. But the amount of brush and things that they have cleared that nobody knows about. You drive by these cemeteries, this guy's out there all day on a Saturday, and so is Steve. Steve couldn't be here tonight. He's, he's in Vermont recruiting. But I'm sure that this gentleman will reach out to someone of you, or some of you, and I just want to set the record straight. And if you do talk to him, if he's coming here next week, I would like to be here. I would like to be notified if he is going to be here, because it really bothers me. This really bothers me, and not because of me, it's because of these folks. I know what these people are doing, and I want to defend them. So Kenny would like to speak.
I appreciate it. Does the board have any questions on what we're trying to do, or have any issues?
I, I see the work you're doing over at Goose Pond Road.
I just want to make sure that we have support, the right support.
You definitely have ours.
It does bother me to hear that he's upset about something.
I think you'll find that the, the people that do the complaining, like, there aren't the people actually out there actually doing town good.
And, you know, I would appreciate, you'll see me in any cemetery. I'm up here in the morning cleaning stones up here in the Acton Corner 1. You know, I'm working in St. Paige, repairing broken stones. If you see me coming, say, "Hey." If you're interested in what's going on-
You can just drive by and stop your car and look, you know.
And we can, I will let you know what's going on.
I think, I think as far as I know, the board's got you guys' back.
Absolutely.
Appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Everything we do is within the rules and regulations of the Maine State laws, and MOKA, who sets these standards in the state of Maine, so.
And I mean, this guy went up and bought a stump grinder for this, you know what I mean?
Did you pay for that personally, that stump grinder? Thank you.
We're trying to do everything without asking the town, but we can't-
You can't do the trees.
Cut these trees.
We understand that.
Nor should you be.
Right.
The big cemetery up to, next to Willie's has 30 trees in it, and we've already spoken, whoever's going to do that is going to have, have, have to use a crane, because there's just too many of them, and some of those stones we won't be able to pull out of there, you know. And so that one is going to, if we do somehow get this $10,000 on town floor, it's going to be nothing for trees. And if you're going to write a warrant article, I'd like it to specify that, nothing but tree cutting. That would, that would be fantastic. But since we're going to use a crane, you know, David, you're in the industry, that it's probably going to wipe out three quarters of that.
I just had one tree taken down, down across from your house, and it was half a tree because the top broke off. And it was probably 28 inches, 30 inches in diameter. It was 3,000 bucks, just for that one tree.
Yes.
But the term "desecrating" with these people, it's, it's offensive. It's offensive, you know. People who are working hard for this town, you don't see them posing in pitches, you know.
How many, how many cemeteries do you provide maintenance to?
On our list, we have 80.
Eighty?
Yeah, 80.
Eighty?
But Steve believes that we have over 100, because of the forgotten, lost, or rumored to be.
Revolutionary law.
So you're attempting to maintain all of those on some kind of cycle? You do an assessment, and you get to the ones you think that are in the biggest need, I assume?
Some are a half mile in the woods, and, you know, we do the best we can.
I understand, I understand.
But we do address the ones that are way out in the woods also.
And if you folks hear anything, talk to us.
I've never heard a thing about it, to be honest with you, so.
So just, just let us know.
We will.
These guys will.
You can never please any, everyone, but I think the work you're doing is fantastic, and you have our support, so.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, Jim, the $10,000, we're putting it in the same reserve account that all of your other funds roll over to, so it's not going to say tree work, but it's going to be the only cemetery reserve account. The wording needs to be the same, so that your other balances can continue to roll over, just so you're not surprised that you don't-
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Hi, Joyce Paxey, Capital Improvement. We've gotten a couple of phone calls from this last meeting, I have, for the committee, and one of our committee members reached out to me, and we were wondering if we can get a copy of the original RFP that went out after some of the things that we heard, very good criticism, constructive criticism. We want to make sure that what was in the RFP is what we got in the report. So is it possible to get?
Well, I think you'd need the RFP, and you'd need their proposal or contract to assess that.
We have a copy of what their proposal is. We just don't have the RFP.
I thought it was posted.
Yeah, I mean, the RFP may have come down by now.
It was posted originally. Sure, we can get it to you. No problem.
I just wondered, though, I mean, I certainly can get it to you, but if, if-
It's not really going to do anything. It's our job.
If the contract doesn't match the RFP, that's really a Sluckman issue.
Yeah, that's right.
You know what I mean? That's a new issue that you've signed, that you've paid.
Yeah, but, but we would, you know, I mean, we would come to you and say-
But I think the contract, I think Jennifer's pointing out that what matters is the contract.
Right.
So you have that?
Not that, we have the report they issued.
Okay.
That, Jennifer, that-
Send me an email, and I'll, I'll send you the RFP and the contract.
I mean, what we can do as a board is we can go through the contract and go through the thing again.
I was thinking of doing the same thing, to be honest with you, Joyce.
Yeah, okay.
I wanted to go back and review it and-
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Liaison updates. I'll be at your Warrant and Finance Committee. It's on Monday, 6 o'clock. Anyone else?
Let's see here. Cemetery Committee just kind of got up and spoke, so I don't have to say anything there. Rec Committee, we're kind of waiting still for a date, right?
So it looks like, well, we have one tentatively, so it looks like we're going to do it via Zoom. It's just going to be you and I and Sam.
Okay.
12th is still the day that you and I talked about.
Okay.
He just can't be here in person. He did indicate that when he was here last, he visited the rec field, so it's just a matter of-
Okay.
Talking about what those engineering services look like. Probably a Zoom call.
Good, good. Other than that, that's it?
David?
I don't think I have any updates on it.
Okay. All right.
I've reached out, so I have reached out, Dave. RSMS, as far as another bid on the, I've got no response.
No response. This is, you've, you had previously reached out to them.
Correct. And he asked for the list of roads. We sent him the same information that SABAGO Technics got.
When was the last time you, you heard from him?
I physically got a response probably two or three weeks ago. So we'll send him one more email.
Why don't you send him one more, give him a date, and if we don't have from, from that date, we're, just let him know we're moving on.
Do we need that number for the warrant, though?
I put the SABAGO Technics number in the warrant.
Yeah, I would just use that.
Put something in there.
I think. Okay, very good. Ready for old business. Roy Talbot engagement letter. We've received an engagement letter. We've had a chance to, we asked legal counsel to take a look at it. They had some recommendations for changes that came in today. We'll be, I'll be in touch with Mike Roy to review some issues around limitation of liability. I think that's the only remaining issue there is. Hopefully, we get that resolved, and we'll come back at the next meeting with a final agreement to be signed.
And Brad just sent the PDF redline, so it's in all of your inboxes to look at.
Wonderful, thank you. All right. Draft warrant.
All right.
All right. This is hot off the press?
Yes. The, all right, so we're going to start on page 11, pages 1 through 10. The only thing missing on, first couple of articles, I usually confirm with the Chair of the Committees of whose term I believe is coming due, but other than that, it's minor. 1 through 10 is all zoning. No changes there. So at this point, they should be numbered properly, underlined. 9 and 10, we didn't make any changes to. 11 is a combination, so if you can just put a little star next to 11, if you can read that in its entirety. We're still going to move forward with Warrant and Finance, but you could change a word if you needed to.
I'm not following you, Jennifer.
11 was a combination of a couple of articles, so I just want you to start to be sure you read it word for word.
Oh, okay, fine.
We kind of lumped a few together.
Yeah.
Lengthy, but it's a combination.
Yeah. 12 is standard.
12 is fine. 13 is a combination of a few, so again, the wordage was combined. The change on 14 is that we removed the road accounts that we had talked about.
Yeah.
And then the other piece is whether or not these account numbers are staying in, so.
Have the road accounts been removed?
They have been removed.
Okay, fine.
But looking at APAT, looking at Cemetery Committee funds, this delegates what specific account number can be rolled forward, and this is where we've had a problem in the past, because if we get a new software company, that account number changes, so.
There's no need for account numbers. Are we sure that these titles agree with the titles in the general ledger?
I, I assume they will.
Let's make sure, because I, I noticed some differences in-
And that's why, kind of like we were saying to Jim, when, when we were trying to replenish that account, we backed, we went back to when it was created and copied and pasted from-
You know, I noticed there was differences in the titles that were in the audited statement versus what was in the general ledger, and I had to make some assumptions about which one they were talking about. So we probably should revise the general ledger to agree with the audited statement. Yes, to agree with the audited statement, because those are, that's where we get these balances from.
We should actually match the audited statement.
I, I, that would be my, that would be my-
Make it easier for everybody.
So we're going to get rid of the account numbers themselves?
Yeah, they're all going to go. All right, and, okay, nothing else there? On to 15, Jennifer?
15 is fine. 16, the change here is that we combined health and welfare. It is not actually part of general government, but we just combined the verbiage and put them in one article.
Yeah.
So you'll see two different raised and appropriate amounts in the same article. 17, it's not fixed. 17 needs the verbiage of the actual, we already have an account for this parking lot project, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So you can see, I left it bold, hoping that someone would change the word, so it needs to be fixed.
Okay.
So 17 needs to be fixed.
Fire department is fine. We did put, we moved up the fire department phone system for your request. You asked for the special request to be moved to the department.
Yes.
Remember?
Was this the number? I thought it was a little different than that. I thought it was like 8,000.
No, it was 68 and change, I think.
Oh, is that what it was? Oh, is that what it was?
And I guess the other thing that I need to look at is all of these special projects, we, we're tagging them from unassigned fund balance and not raise and appropriate. So at some point, you need to add up what is coming from unassigned and make sure that's the amount that you want to spend because it's going to add up quick.
Understand.
Okay. 20 is the public safety.
Those have already been reviewed.
Yep. 21, the only change is, was the hourly rate that David updated us on. You flipped to page 30, 15 at the top, remember that number was wrong, the 3371?
Yeah.
And David, I just wanted you to, can you peek at that cost of operations? Does that read correctly? It's $5 per gallon, is that right, on 15?
Go back to it, yeah.
Sorry.
Page 15.
The cost of operations, can you just read that, the first couple of lines?
Yeah.
$5 and then $1, that's all right? 25 cents, okay?
It's all good.
Okay, now the next ones we want to look at carefully because they're completely rewritten. 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate 361, 863, and appropriate 26054 from state LRAP. And then we broke down summer maintenance and paving and reconstruction, so you add those two, they will add to the total of the appropriation and the appropriate LRAP funds. So we did that for District 1 and District 2. The district, difference with 23 is it has flat ground note in it.
Okay.
I thought we were going to drop the number to 3,000 and add in the plow.
And that's why we're proofing it. All right, 24. Oh wait, let me go just go back, David. So we're going to add, drop flat ground to 3,000 and not touch the paving because they can do whatever they need to, right? Winter maintenance on that room, as far as.
Yeah.
Or increasing.
That was the idea.
Well, pretty much, we actually added to it.
Right, right.
Because now the plows are free.
Right, so I'm not adding the number of the next article, the 2,000?
Yeah.
No.
Yes, I am? No? Okay. So 24 is going to be.
Can I go back to 22?
Sure.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate 361 to appropriate 26 from state LRAP. So is the 26 in addition to the 361?
Correct.
But 26 is coming from LRAP and the 361 is coming from?
Taxation.
Taxation. Okay, thank you. It's just worded a little strange.
We certainly can change it if you'd mind.
No, I'm not sure how I would, but, okay.
All right, so 24 is raising and appropriating $4,009,747 for winter maintenance and the sand and salt. So this is where 15% comes from, this is one of the changes, so District 1 and 2. And then the next line was.
We added, we added the 30,000 to that account, each one of those, each one of those ones.
Those, that's with the 30,000.
Yeah, that's with the 30,000.
Right, where's, oh, they're not here. Yes, I'll double check.
No, it is. I think it was 99,000.
It should be, right, because it was 96.
96,000, yeah, so it is.
Sand and salt, though, was left the way it was.
Yeah, 156, yeah.
And then its loan article was the Public Works Building and Ground. There was nowhere really to put that. Okay, so 26 is a brand new article, so to see if the town will vote to establish a reserve account called Peck Road Reserve Account and appropriate 130,500 to reconstruct and pave the portion of Peck Road from Milton Mills Road to the dirt. What's missing here is Peck Road Reserve and appropriate 135, it needs to say from, oh, no, it looks like she got it at the end, I'm sorry. Well, it needs to say where it's being appropriated from, which is the unassigned fund balance, but the last line, it says, "Any funds remaining in this account after the completion of the repair, no later than 6/30 of 2025," you said two years, David, "shall be returned to the unassigned fund balance."
So it's going to be appropriated from unassigned fund balances?
Right, and go back.
So you've got to put that.
So those words really should go up there.
Where did this one come from? Because I.
This is, this is a special.
This is a special.
Based on the liaison's recommendation.
Remember, we're trying to get rid of the rollover money?
No, the Peck Road Reserve.
That was the District 2's.
Special project.
That was his special project that you guys approved.
So we're making up a new Peck Road Reserve.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So what we're doing is we're trying to get rid of the rollovers. I figured give him two years to get the project done. If it's not done in that two years, you put the money back in, it doesn't need to.
Got it, like it.
All right, 27 is the transfer station. That one's fine. 28 is to see if the town will vote to appropriate 60,000 from the unassigned fund balance to hire an engineer to assess the transfer station for future land and building improvements, based on the quotes. And then another one, to see if the town will, will vote to appropriate 10,000 for the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of two storage containers to be used at the transfer station.
Have you gotten updated bids and is this going to be adequate? Is the 10 going to be adequate?
I, I believe so, but I haven't reached, I've made a phone call to him, he hasn't called me back, so I will make another phone call.
Why don't we get that firmed up before we put this forth, okay? Get a firm number?
I'll call them tomorrow.
And then we can use that number here. All right?
Planning and development doesn't change. Article 31, the 3,000 doesn't change.
Yeah.
And 31, 32 should be the 10,000. I'm going to assume that it's somewhere else, but. Article 32 is going to be the 10,000 for the tree, because we're trying to keep the departments together.
Article 32?
I'm telling you, that article 32 should be the tree cutting. I'm going to guess it's somewhere in the end, remember?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
All right, okay.
Hoping we're going to get to it either way, I promise you it'll be there by Friday.
All right.
So that 10,000.
What are we, what are we talking about, the $10,000 that Jim was just asking?
Exactly. That should be right after the cemetery. This is the first time I'm seeing.
So you're just going to renumber them, is what you're saying?
Okay, so yeah, you're going to move that to go. All right, and then.
Do you want that 10,000 to be raised and appropriated, or do you want it to come out of your unassigned fund balance? Or do you want to wait and add it up and let me know?
I, I don't know about you, I got to go through and add up all these reserves.
Yeah, I think we need to do some adding, yeah.
Because these are getting large and we may need to appropriate them. It also plays into the question about estimated taxes.
Oh, there it is.
Which we're going to decide, which we're going to model next, next week.
Right.
I mean, we typically pull money out of the undesignated fund offset anyways.
Right.
So if we pull, pull from the undesignated fund for all these little ones, it's going to be the same thing anyways.
Right, so if we know, I mean, at this point, we're going to, we know what our balance is.
Yeah.
What we need to know is how much we're going to need to offset based on the assessment increase.
Yes.
Then subtract what you want to have based on your undesignated fund policy, then figure out how much.
Let's come back and talk about this after next week, okay? Does it matter to, it does.
It is.
I know it matters in the wording. Does it matter in the consideration of warrant and finance, whether it's raise and appropriate or just appropriate?
Yeah, and that'd be up to the committee, if it was a concern or not.
I think we'd be better off raising and appropriating for the simple reason is that we're going to be locking in that tax rate.
Yeah.
Because of that 65, or what do they call that?
Stabilization.
Yeah, stabilization, right.
So this, this year here, we want to make sure that we get everything locked, locked in on raise and appropriate instead of taking out of the undesignated fund.
That's the way, that's where I was going, but I wanted to.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
See those numbers that we're going to look at next week.
And I don't think we've, I mean, we haven't spent as much as we did last year. I think you might, might be all right, but we'll know more after Wednesday, but it's a good point.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so that was, so 32, as now is your combination of all of your social services.
Yeah.
Love it.
So they're listed out there. 33 is the dam, the dam, Mouson Dam and Valch. 34 is cable television. 35 is the rec. Yeah, but that's not written, we've got to change the wording of that. So that 40.
We're going to set this up as a reserve also.
Well, it needs to go in the reserve that's already there.
Oh, you're right, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the, to purchase a shed and playground is all going to go out, and it's just going to say 40,000 to be placed in the rec.
Rec reserve.
Reserve.
Okay.
For the purpose?
Uh, not necessarily, because you don't know how much the parking lot's going to cost. I mean, we don't know what the engineer is going to be. I mean, that's the direction you guys gave me, I mean, we can have it.
So, yeah, what we did was put, you know, playground, shed, we added that all in there so that when the engineer comes forward, and we do, we have some money to go forward with it, it gives a more of a broad spectrum there.
So 37 is your reimbursement for the snowmobile club. 38 is my cemetery one that will shift. 39 is your 10,000 for the unassigned fund balance, that's appropriate, oh, for the road assessment.
I thought it was more than this.
Nope, it was 9,000 for road assessment, because remember, we talked about.
From Sabeo?
And the survey.
Yeah, okay. All right, I had another number in my, I had 18, but I'll go with you, Jennifer.
We're dealing with numbers every week, so.
All day, right.
Okay, well.
You're sure you're right.
I'm sure you're right, is right.
All right, article 40, so see if the town will vote to appropriate, this is the 75,000 for the school's capital reserve account. I reached out to the superintendent, he did respond and has a layout of the next three years of his, of his unassigned fund balance. Does not think it should come from the school. And all but told me that he would withdraw his request if that was an insistence of the town. I'm going to ask you to look at that email and.
He, he sent an email, I have not read it yet.
I haven't seen it yet.
So I need to look at it, have you seen it?
I haven't seen it yet.
Either of you?
No, I didn't see it.
So I think we, we hold on this for now.
Okay.
I know they ought to, if they, I'm fine with replenishing the reserve, it's a matter of who's going to do it.
So for the sake of Monday's meeting, it's probably going to say from the schools slash towns, and I don't expect warrant and finance to get to that article in their first meeting, so we'll take our chances.
Okay.
And then 41, probably not expecting, but this is going to be to see if the town will appropriate blank amount, which I don't have the exact number yet, from the American Rescue Plan Fun Act to be placed in the West Shore Drive Bridge and Culvert Capital Improvement. This is because the water treatment plan, you appropriated $30,000 from the ARPA funds and only spent 10 of it.
We have more.
So I took it upon myself to think that we just dump it in that account.
That would be.
I think we'll need it there. Okay. Uh, see the balance that person's, okay, good. So we'll be able to share this with warrant and finance?
In a couple of days.
Couple of days, you'll get it in a couple of days, Dennis?
Everything that we just talked about, those changes have to be done first, so you've got to give it to us to do them.
Yeah.
I mean, if you get it Monday, then you get it Monday, we're doing our best.
Do our best. Okay. Surveys.
So per the last meeting, you wanted to take, have a chance to read over the contract that you subined with, signed with Sabeo Technics and review the two surveys that came in, one for Peck Road and one for, was it Peck? Hawk?
Hawk Road.
Hawk Road, one for Hawk Road and one for the town hall, so. Yeah. Not sure where that stands with the board.
As I recall, the discussion at the last meeting was desire to go forward and do that work. The price that we got for that was how much, Jennifer, from them, an estimated?
I believe that one was 8,000.
8,000 is what I recall. $8,000, and this will be the first time that we will have used this firm for a survey. Seems to me a, a great opportunity to just do a little price check on it with another vendor and see if it's in the ballpark. If it is, then I would just go with Sabeo.
I agree with that.
That'd be, we engaged Sabeo to do work without having to bid it, so, but I think this is just a little extra due diligence, just to make sure that the fee that we're getting is reasonable.
Right.
That it?
Who's going to make that call?
I will reach out to Jason tomorrow.
Good. All right, purchasing policy, this was to revise the purchasing policy for work done by the road agents on town property?
Yeah, so if you look at the fourth paragraph down, underline is what is in my proposal. So it does say that emergency expenditures are exempt from this requirement after approval from the SLUC board. And then it goes on to say that department heads are authorized to use general service providers as defined below or road commissioners on the appropriate side of town without soliciting free bids. An estimate must be received in writing and approved by the town administrator and liaison prior to any work starting. All work provided by the road commissioners must be billed at approved road rates.
That sounds good.
That's it.
Any discussion?
No, I think it sounds good.
That's what we went over.
Any comments? A couple of comment? Okay, we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the new town of Acton's purchasing policy.
One second, that.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Go into the executive session, I'll pull out the underline real quick so you can sign I'll pull out the underline real quick so you can sign a fresh copy when we come out.
Okay, thank you. Pepin Land Gift, uh, per, uh, the selectmen are not in a position or has the authorization to select a gift or to accept a gift of land. It would need to go before, uh, the townspeople for a vote, and that's not gonna make it for the June meeting, so it would be on the next available, the next either public meeting or ballot vote that the earliest this could be taken up. I'd suggest we defer this for a little bit until we have a chance to, uh, consider this fully and, and decide whether or not this should go forward on a warrant.
Okay.
Comments?
I agree.
Okay. Town meeting expense, Mary Grant. What's this about, Jennifer?
So, um, remember we spoke, uh, well, you were spoken to, you guys have had some conversations about what we're gonna do to rally the troops for town meeting, so...
Oh, yes.
Mary Grant has agreed to do a breakfast slash brunch.
Oh, nice.
They'd like to know if the town's gonna pay for it. I mean, they have a very small budget and really it shouldn't come out of theirs. We're asking them to do it, so...
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I'll find a...
How much do you think it might be?
I don't know, man, if I said less than five hundred dollars. I mean, they're gonna have some revenue. The idea is that they're volunteering their times, so we'll flip the bill, but the revenue will go to the Mary Grant Committee.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Will anybody be baking things besides just the breakfast thing? I was just kinda wondering if they needed, you know, volunteers to cook and bake and stuff.
The fur, unless Virginia wants to speak on behalf of the committee, they'd have to ask the chair. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Mr. Neal. Mr. Neal, how about I send an email to the chair so we follow the proper channels?
All right, yep, yeah, just...
Has the, this is gonna be held at the school, correct? Has, has the school, have there been any discussions about daycare?
Yes, that was the next thing I was gonna get to. The PTG did speak to me, and my head, you have a contact that is rallying the troops. They're hoping, I mean, we don't need to start advertising this for, you know, we've got another couple of weeks, but looks like we're gonna be able to provide some daycare.
Good.
Uh, so the other cost is out of your municipal management budget, because that's where this would come from. Are you looking to do signs or a mailing? I mean, you guys have talked about this at the public meetings, so what is your instruction?
I, I like to mail them myself.
I like signs, too.
How would you do the mailing?
Um, we would reach out to the post office, do a bulk mailing, get it inserted in one of the flyers.
And the mailing would basically reminding everyone that we have a town meeting, what the ballots would be, what the items would be?
No.
No?
No. Fourteen, fifteen page, I mean, we'll reference where they could go.
No highlights or anything? Okay.
I mean, not only wanna put something controversial on there and try to draw the, draw the crowd, it's just gonna be...
Yeah, gonna raise taxes six percent, yeah, okay.
Don't attend. If you attend, you get ten percent off your tax bill.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so just, I don't know, I'm thinking a very basic flyer, election times, I mean...
Maybe some free hot dogs or something, right?
I know, there's a charge. Remember, we have to make money for Mary Grant.
Okay.
Uh, what about signs? Yet another resident mentioned signs. Are you looking for me to order those?
I would think we should put a few signs out. I, I'm just, you know, and...
Where would you put them?
A few, you know, out here, maybe down by the fairgrounds, maybe at the school.
I mean, I'll order them. I trust one of you will, will put them out.
Yeah.
Or handyman.
Handyman could do that.
Handyman.
And you want them to say, in an effort to use them both he, more than one year, just town meeting this Saturday and not put a date on it, or you want a date?
I like this Saturday. I think that's a...
I think that would be good, yeah.
It does.
That way we can use it over.
Sounds like a very Google approach. There we go.
Sheep over there.
Well, it's a good idea. That way we can reuse them.
All right. See if we can find the money to fund those items. That's all I have, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Auditing RFP, um... We've made some change. We've taken last, last year's RFP for audit services, revised it, clarified that what we're actually, actually looking for this time is simply an auditing firm, not someone to prepare financial statements. I've shared that with Mark Roy, who's our new accounting services partner, and he's provided some comments. I've looked at that. I think those are fine to incorporate, and we'll put those into, uh, we'll take one more pass at this.
Have you guys seen all this?
We'll have it at our next meeting for...
I haven't seen it.
I only saw half of that, so...
We'll take it up at our next meeting, not tonight.
Okay.
Uh, we'll get those changes out to you, and hopefully we can resolve this next week.
Great.
I assume we're in agreement about sending out an RFP?
For the auditing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. TD Bank Account Opening.
So, um, this email, you sent me the email from TD Bank about the new brokerage accounts and the users and signers and so forth, and I forwarded this to the board, um, and it was David, and he mentioned that we hadn't talked about what direction we were going in, what bank, so he wanted more clarification before we just, before I filled it out and sent it back.
Yeah. I had sent you, I had asked TD to clarify what their, uh, what the cost was of managing the account. Did you share that with the other members?
Yes, I did, it's in the email.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have that here in front of me, but it was de minimis, to say the least. Um, the, uh, the transactional cost for the account was, uh, very, very small. Uh, it seems to me it was gonna be less than a thousand dollars a year to manage a portfolio of, you know, four to six million dollars.
Ten dollar processing fee per note or bill at maturity?
Yeah, this, this was, I, I said a thousand, it probably won't be that much. Uh, the account is, uh, very inexpensive. I did contact one of the firm. I contacted Schwab. Uh, the fees were just, uh, significant, to say the least. Uh, this arrangement with TD Bank was, uh, by far, I thought, just a superior and low-cost option. I've talked with them. I think they're a very competent firm to do the work and very comfortable with them. Normally, I would say we'd do an RFP, but I can't imagine anyone's gonna come in with a cheaper cost, to be quite honest with you, so, um, I would recommend that we go forward with them. You've had a chance to look at, look at that note, that email?
I haven't.
Okay.
I haven't looked at that one. I was just, obviously, I wish I had at this point, but how are we, how are we, how are we looking at doing this? Are we, are we literally talking about getting right out of SIS or partner?
No, this is just for the, this is no conversation.
Okay.
No, okay, good.
Just for investments.
Just for investments, okay.
There are two things going on. This one is investments.
We didn't have any conversations as a whole about the town.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that we're...
Let me clarify. I did have a discussion with TD. Um, it, it came about when, um, Jennifer was reviewing the process for, um, handling the receipt of tax bills and all the work and effort associated with that. And, uh, there's a service offered by many banks and perhaps Profile. I'll have to check with them.
Partners?
Hmm?
Partners.
Partners, excuse me. Partners Bank, uh, called Lockbox, and basically what it is, is, uh, the checks, uh, are returned to a lockbox, and the bank will simply process all the checks and send us, deposit them and send us a remittance that would indicate exactly who paid how much money, and you can actually set that up so it automatically updates the individual's accounts.
But we still have to manually do it on the software, right?
No, no, you shouldn't. You shouldn't have to. They should be able to give you a feed in a format that would be acceptable to Trio that would allow you to automatically update everyone's accounts. Now, uh, and when I talked to the bank, they said they do this for other towns, so, uh, this could be a significant aid. I, I don't know that our current bank offers this services, and so we need to talk with them about it as well, but, um, so Jennifer and I have a, a call next Wednesday?
Yes.
With them, just to hear, um, the, the services they have to offer, and then we can decide whether or not it's something we wanna go further with. It may result in an RFP. We may decide to just leave it where it is.
So this email that, that was sent yesterday, and I just, I forwarded it to you guys yesterday, is just to set up the brokerage accounts at TD. So you have to decide if you wanna go out as an RFP for the brokerage first, and then we have one, two, three, four, you know, five or six attachments that we need to figure out who the board wants to serve in these roles, um, because I can't fill out the paperwork without instruction from the board. So I guess two-part, and then you can deal with the whole checking account later, but so...
It'd be a good idea to get, I know you, you, TD, Schwab, Schwab or whatever it is, and if we could get three proposals that we can at least get in hand. I don't, putting, putting an RFP out like that wouldn't really, doesn't really, I don't know how that would work.
So you're just asking them what their charge is on investment per transaction? Is that all it comes down to?
I gotta tell you, I gotta tell you, it took me two weeks to get to someone at Schwab that could answer the question, and that's a firm that typically does these things.
I just, I just wanna make sure, I mean, the questions were asked, they're in the public hearing.
Sure.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're making the attempt that we're, we're looking at, um, multiple situations here, um, but...
I have no problem with doing an RFP. It's just, you know, we gotta get one done, and it's gonna probably take another month to do it. By the time we get through that process.
Well, I'm just, I don't, I don't think, I don't, I'm not saying to do an RFP per se.
I don't think we need to do an RFP.
I'm talking about just, just so that we got something in hand that we can look at.
So you got TD, you've got a Schwab, maybe one more?
And make a decision. Uh, TD, if TD is the lowest, you know, I'm...
How about another, how about another bank?
You're not gonna get a bank to do this. You're not gonna, this is, uh, you need, and, uh, you can get a bank to do it, but they have to have an investment arm to do it. Most banks don't do that. Most smaller banks don't do that. You'd be looking at a larger bank like Bank of America, JP Morgan, uh, you know, those are the, those are the institutions that would do it.
We can't get a proposal from JP Morgan or Schwab.
Sure, sure.
And TD, at least get three proposals. I mean, I don't know if that meets our, our policy or not, but, um, of course, we can change our policy as we, as we will.
I mean, it's not really a purchase.
Instead of putting it out and putting it a month out, you know, we could, is that something you think we could have done by next week?
No.
No, you don't think so?
I'm serious. It took me two weeks to finally get to the right person at Schwab. He's, it, it, I know it's a lot of money to us.
Yeah.
But it's not a lot of money to these, these places.
Yeah.
And, and typically, you're dealing with a unit within the organization that deals with, uh, cities and towns, which is kinda buried someplace in the organization, and finding them is, I'm learning, is difficult to, to do, so it, I don't mind doing it, but it's gonna take longer. And if, if, you know, if that's the will of, of the group, then...
Well, no, I mean, I'm just making a suggestion here. You know, I, I'm just trying to, uh, make sure that we're...
We feel we don't need to go for an RFP. I mean, I, I don't think we should do that. I mean, and, I don't know, I think we should just move on.
I think the only one that can, I, I don't think, I, I couldn't ask Jennifer to do this, because I'm not gonna ask Jennifer to do it, so I'm gonna have to do it. So I, I'll, I'll do it, and...
Well, I mean, it might be the project for the treasurer. She's, I'm guessing, gonna be...
I, 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 I know my way around this, and it's been complicated to do. I'll tell you, it's not easy, so I wouldn't even ask the treasurer to do this, because no, no, no comment on her ability is just, it's difficult to deal with these organizations and find the right person.
I'm just suggesting, you know, Kim, what, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's gonna make much of a difference. I do think that TD Bank is gonna be the lowest.
I'll take the next week. By the next week, I'll come back, I'll come back in the next week, and I'll tell you what I can do, what I can't do, fair enough.
If you, if you wanna do that, it's fun. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're going through the right, right steps here.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
You know, with the comments that were made during the public hearing, I, you know, we wanna make sure that, you know, we, we do everything right here, um, but, you know...
And it'll give you a chance to look at this email, because again, somebody, you need to decide who all these contacts are going to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what the, you know, all these fix annuities and commodities and equity, I mean...
Oh, those things are not, most of that is not applicable. I've read through it, Jennifer. There's very little that is.
I know that, so I would know that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll bring it back to the next meeting. I'll do my homework.
We appreciate that, Tom.
Yep. We have an executive session, but before we do that, let's go to public comment.
If I could, um, have clarification, there's been a, a conversation, a few meetings now about whether or not we're gonna use a hundred percent value on our assessment to set the tax rate and stuff. I don't understand, I guess, why we wouldn't use the hundred percent valuation, where we are just done paying to have a revale to make sure assessments are all where they're supposed to be.
Did I understand they're gonna have three proposals?
They are, but in, in, not to over, step on what the board's gonna do, but we're probably going to be, it's definitely gonna be recommended we use a hundred percent, because we get more of a homestead exemption ban. We get, there, the benefits, you're right, I mean, it should be a hundred percent. There is gonna be, apparently you can be at a hundred and five, you can be higher than that.